Okay, it's 5:30. I will call to orders. This is the West Fargo planning and zoning commission meeting for Monday, April 10th. Second order of business is the approval of the minutes from March 7th.
The approval is digitally reproduced?
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes as published. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. And it's approved. Item number four, I guess I skipped. Approval of order of agenda. I guess I was supposed to do that. We added that last time, right? My apologies. See, I went straight to how we've been doing it. I'm going to continue through, though, unless there's somebody has another item we want to add to the agenda. Okay. Item number four is a continuation of A-23-4 Sand Hills. Any concerns with continuing until next month's meeting? If not, we will move forward to item number five, public hearing. A-23-10 variance to decrease setbacks from 60 feet to 20 feet for a private, non-commercial recreational facility in an R1E, rural estate district located on proposed Lot 2, Block 1 of Saki subdivision. Lots 10, 11, 14, 15, Block 1 of Guam subdivision and vacated Short Street. Cass County, North Dakota, Saki.
Thank you. Earlier this year, the applicant submitted an application for a subdivision replat and conditional use permit for a 4,000-square-foot private, non-commercial recreational facility. The applicant is now requesting a variance for the decrease of the required yard setbacks from 60 to 20 feet. The submitted site plan shows the building location with both the 60-foot and 20-foot setbacks. With regard to the applicants for variance from the required yard setbacks, the planning commission is required to hold a public hearing and forward their findings and recommendations on to the Board of Adjustments. The following criteria are required to be met in order to grant a variance. Number one, that special conditions and circumstances exist which are peculiar to the land structure and building involved and which are not applicable to other lands, structures, or buildings in the same district. Number two, the literal interpretation of the provisions of this ordinance would deprive the applicant of rights commonly enjoyed by other properties in the same district under the terms of this ordinance. Number three, that special conditions and circumstances do not result from the actions of the applicant. Number four, that granting the variance requested will not confer on the applicant any special privilege that is denied by this ordinance to other lands, structures, or buildings in the same district. The applicant responded to the criteria, and that's included in your packet, and he's available to answer any questions. Under staff analysis, it does not appear that the variance can be justified as none of the criteria listed are met. There are no special conditions or circumstances that exist with the property or buildings that are not applicable to other lands or buildings within the same zoning district. The property owner is not being deprived of rights being enjoyed by others because of the ordinance provisions. If the variance would be granted, the applicant would benefit from a special privilege that would not be provided to other land structures or buildings in the same district. The applicant could construct a structure within the setback requirements. It appears that the building can be accommodated on this property without the granting of a variance. The proposal is not consistent with city ordinances dictating a 60-foot setback requirement for private, non-commercial recreational facilities. It is recommended that the city deny the variance on the basis that the application does not meet the criteria for granting a variance. This is a public hearing. I'm available to answer any questions, as is the applicant. And here is the site plan showing the 60-foot setback, and then this rectangle down here shows the 20-foot setback from this side and this side.
Now, for just a quick clarification, this graphic shows the old...
Correct.
Two chunks and then the vacated short, so it's, this is all that?
Yes, the plat hasn't been recorded yet, so...
And that was done a few months ago?
Yes. The city commission just approved it last month.
This is a public hearing. With that, I will open it up for comments or an input from the public.
Ben Saki, I'm the applicant here. Just wanted to kind of walk through a couple of things here regarding the request for the variance. There's a couple of things that I think are, you know, fairly peculiar to this site and to this building that aren't typically commonplace in other parcels zoned. I guess just to expand my comments back from the response on the applicant's here is, I feel this idea is, you know, fairly peculiar because there's a lack of privately-owned property around that site. The vast majority of it is owned by the county, heavy use restrictions, and then there's a one private parcel owner to the east of me, but that parcel's not going to be developable to my understanding because it's too close to County Road 17, and they're going to need that for right of way, et cetera. Item number, or the second provision on something like that, it wouldn't necessarily deprive rights for use of that property, but it would add significant cost and unnecessary cost to construct the building. You know, an increase in the variance is actually adding greater buffers to the neighborhood up there. I think everybody's kind of seen buildings in the past that are built in the middle of a lot, and you kind of drive by and scratch your head and wonder who, what, where, and why. I think aesthetically, it'd be more pleasing, you know, tucked back in the corner there a little bit, and it would allow a little bit easier access, et cetera. And as far as number three goes, there's special access requirements on something like that. Initially, it was proposed to have access from the north on 19th Avenue. However, the township does not want to provide that access, so I have to come in from the south side of the property and go north on Height Street there. And as far as, I guess, the special privileges that would be granted, I don't see where any special privileges are granted, you know, due to this variance. I mean, the special privileges were granted during the conditional use permit. I guess in my opinion, the variance doesn't necessarily allow anything that wouldn't happen otherwise here, so I guess with that, that's my just further explanation. If you guys have any questions, happy to answer.
Thank you. Any other comment or input from the public on this topic? Seeing none, we'll close that section. Commissioners? Questions?
I believe it was January or February.
Yeah, I remember, two months ago.
Yes.
The reason that the county owns land adjacent to it is because the homes were all bought out because it's a flood from the quarter, corner. You go up here in a week or two, and that's all going to be underwater. It's going to start trickling over 19th Avenue to the north. That diversion will protect that someday, but if I was here, I wouldn't grant that initial use permit. I'm going to have to build this up higher than 19th Avenue, low there.
Separate issue?
I know. And the setback requirement is from the borders, not from the road.
It is a 60-foot setback from the property line, I believe. Let's see here. Yes. Front and rear inside yard shall be at least 60 feet wide, and shall be landscaped. Yep, 60 feet. Doesn't talk about from the road.
Yeah. They abandoned the short street and the replatted as well. I need those two chunks and one.
He needed an acre to develop the property, and there were four parcels that...
Yes, and it's not residential. It's a recreational facility, so for the flood issue, it's not a home.
Regarding the setbacks, there's also, correct me if I'm wrong, but there's also a setback from the river for development purposes, correct?
Right, there's a riverbank control line.
And so, I think you had mentioned that there's, the staff believes there is space to fit the building into the developable area adhering to all of the setbacks, the river and the side yard setbacks?
Yes. It was just this little corner right here that...
Okay, thanks.
Issues. And the riverbank control line is on the, recorded on the plat, so...
Okay.
Commissioner, if I might, that site plan up there, the building that's up to the north is only 76 feet versus the one in the bottom is 80 feet. So if we take the two 60-foot setbacks on the east and on the west, that comes up to 120 plus 80 is 200, and I'd leave the lot width as 198, so I'm just a little bit short of getting the full building, I guess.
Thank you for that clarification. Anything else? So, it's a question of... Needed?
Well, yeah, right. So, maybe just, this maybe isn't germane to the topic at hand here, but the access issue, you've gotten that clarified, that your access will have to be from the south, is that right?
Yes, my understanding through conversation with Jason Benson at the county was that there's a private access easement that extends on Height Street there to go over.
Are there any other questions, comments? Because it's been pretty straightforward laid out by our staff regarding interpret, the city's interpretation of the requirements for this variance.
I'll move to deny. I'll second that. The city's staff here suggests that none of the criteria are applicable, and while I tend to agree that certainly the vast majority of them are not applicable, one or two of them are maybe arguable, and I guess they don't all apply, and so I'll second the motion to deny.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded to deny the variance. Any other discussion required before going to vote? All those in favor of denying the variance, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. The request for variance has been denied.
This will go on to the city commission, to the Board of Adjustments, next meeting.
Item number six. Public hearing, A-23-11. Zoning ordinance amendments to Title IV of the city ordinances relating to site and building plan review within overlay zoning districts and general clerical corrections.
Thank you. The purpose of the proposed amendments is to modify and clarify zoning regulations relating to site and building plan review within corridor overlay districts and some general clerical corrections. In 2015, the CM, Heavy Commercial Light Industrial zoning district, was eliminated and divided into two separate zoning districts, the heavy commercial and the light industrial. Within Title IV, there are some references still to the CM district. The text amendment would clean up that language. There are also some other typos within there, within the ordinance that will be corrected. Within the corridor overlay and the interstate corridor overlay district, there is a requirement that the planning and zoning and city commissions have additional site and building plan review and approval prior to obtaining the building permit. There are already specific development requirements regarding setbacks, lot coverage, landscaping, building construction standards. Staff is recommending eliminating the section that requires planning and zoning and city commission review. Specific text amendments were attached to the staff report. The proposed amendments do not make any major substantive changes in the existing ordinances and are consistent with the comprehensive plan. The proposed amendments are consistent with the comprehensive plan. It is recommended the city approve the amendments on that basis. I'm available to answer any questions, and it's a public hearing.
Thank you. I do have a question.
Okay.
So, you know, it stated that no substantive changes, but we're eliminating a review, but only in the situations where all the criteria are met, right, for what is spelled out for the corridor?
So, in the corridor overlay and the interstate corridor, we, last year, we had several reviews. We did the site plan review for those commercial condos south of 32nd Avenue, and we looked at, do they have adequate parking? Do they have 30% non, or metal, non-metal? And so, it's already in the ordinance that this has to be.
So, those criteria are still going to have to be met?
Yes.
It just doesn't require us to review them at this?
Right. With such a short building season, it's already being reviewed by staff, they have to meet the criteria. Having the planning and zoning commission and city commission review is an extra step, so... Yes.
And, but if there is some situation where it would, for some reason, not fully meet all the criteria, then it could be brought up for review as a...
Is there wording in there that we included, or...
So, right now, the way that the ordinance is written is, within those overlay zoning districts, it requires that somebody that's applied for a building permit, as part of the building permit application process, they submit a site plan, and that's the point in time in which staff reviews the site plan to make sure that it meets all of the applicable zoning and subdivision regulations. Other departments review it for other codes, like the fire department reviews it for fire code requirements, et cetera. The requirement right now requires that that building permit site plan come before the planning and zoning commission, as well as the city commission, for approval. It's just really that, I think, one or two sentences, that's all it really says about it. And it's really just black or white, yes or no, does it meet the requirements or not? And so, you know, when it's on your agenda, essentially, you guys are just kind of double-checking staff's work, you know?
Getting rid of the rubber stamp part of the process?
Right. And when, you know, you guys, the planning and zoning commission only meets once a month, and the city commission every two weeks, it does add quite a bit of timeline to somebody looking to get a building permit. And so, the proposal here is just to remove the requirement that it go to planning and zoning and city commission, or remove the requirement that it be on your agendas, and just allow staff to review it at the staff level, which is consistent with how we review every other zoning requirement or subdivision requirement out there.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure it was clear on that aspect of it. This is a public hearing, and with that, I will open it up for public comment and input. Any input from the public regarding this topic? Seeing none, close that. Commissioners?
Efficiency in government. Is that right?
Yes. So, speaking of efficiency, I will accept the motion then.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the amendments as published. Any further discussion prior to vote?
Just maybe one other comment. I believe this was one of the priority items coming out of that workflow, right? And so, if I understood right, congrats that we're actually accomplishing those things and...
Yeah, it was some kind of low-hanging fruit, if you will, in the code, was recommended that that could be handled in-house by staff. And so, that is our intention, is to, as we have, you know, light agendas and things, you know, I think we anticipate it quieting down a little bit as we've reached, you know, pretty much reached full build-out within the current city limits. We do want to go through the code and just bring some revisions here and there to you guys, so you can probably expect to see a few more of these in the near future. Likewise, if there are things that catch your eye that are an issue, feel free to contact us and bring those to our attention as well.
Thank you. All those in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. The edits or the changes approved? The amendments, I should say. Item number seven, detailed development plans for PUD amendment for multiple dwellings at 1018 17th Street East, Lot 1, Block 1 of Dakota Territory 14th Edition, City of West Fargo, North Dakota, Mission Homes.
Thank you. At your February 14th meeting, you voted to approve the concept development plan subject to seven conditions listed in the staff report. The applicant has submitted detailed development plans for the development, which includes 11 three- and four-unit townhouse structures for a total of 39 units, as well as a private stormwater pond. The applicant has further provided proposed elevations, landscaping, fencing, and site plan information, which is provided in the staff report. It is recommended that the city approve the detailed development plans on the basis that is consistent with the city plans and ordinances with the recommended conditions as follows. A signed PUD agreement is approved, received and approved in conjunction with the detailed development plans. Detailed development plans will be subject to, but not limited to, provisions of the multiple dwelling district, supplementary district regulations, landscaping standards, off-street parking and loading requirements in the signed regulations. This is not a public hearing. I'm available to answer any questions, as is the applicant.
Thank you. I don't have any questions. I read through. Anybody?
Just a comment again. This does meet all the parking requirements?
It does. They're required to have two parking spaces. They've got double car garages, and then they have two parking spots in front of the garages, so... They also indicated that they will have the private drive signed for no parking due to concerns with the public works director and fire department regarding access into the area.
You know, I guess I'd obviously be in favor, as long as they meet all the requirements, but the development, that looks exactly like this to the west, has 31 units, and if you look at any flyover maps on our GIS site or Google Maps, there's 10 extra cars. They're different shots, parked on that little street they got there. They have the same scenario as far as parking. They have the two stalls and all that stuff. As long as it meets it, I just wanted to be aware, there's going to be a parking issue. There's no parking on 17th Street East, and there's limited parking on 10th Avenue. But that's just something they got to be aware of. That's something the developer's going to have to fight with, or when he's gone, whoever owns it, because there's going to be people parking on those interior streets, the limited parking there is. So, just a comment.
Right, and like I said, currently, we require two parking spots per...
Yeah, and I understand. If no one uses their garages for an extra room, it wouldn't be a problem. Or had three cars, of course, this development doesn't take into account that some people do have people who are, you know, to visit for Easter or whatever. There is nowhere, unless they have a parking spot or two left in front of their homes, so just something, again, this is a comment that's obviously not affect the ability of this development to move along, so...
Any other comment or input?
Engineering didn't want the second access to 10th there on the east, but then they said they'll go along with it, but they weren't actually that opposed to it.
Right.
Any reason for not wanting it? Just...
I think it had to do with the proximity to 17th Street.
Yeah, that's close.
But it is, it's considered a local street, so there's, to the west, there are individual accesses for some townhouse units, and then there's the access directly to the west as well, so it's not a limited, considered a limited access street.
Never known engineers to be wishy-washy, guys.
New information came to light.
At times, yeah.
I think there was a change in their perspective on the 10th, as far as how they were treating it was the big difference, right?
Right. Years ago, it was considered a collector, and then development changed.
That's what's changed.
Yes.
When I read through this, I understood, had to make them wishy-washy, I guess. New information came to light. Okay. I would accept some sort of motion, unless there's other discussion points, comments?
Move to approve with the recommendations noted.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the development plans for this PUD. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Plans approved. Item number eight, downtown master plan project update.
All right, good evening. So, this is just an informational item, a project update for the planning and zoning commission here relating to the downtown master plan project. I think the last time that this project was on your agenda was probably around the December timeframe or so. We came to you with a request to recommend to the city commission that we, that the city issue an RFP for this project, which the city commission did. Maybe to take a quick step back, really, the origin of this project overall started in October of 2022, when the city was granted a $100,000 place making planning grant for downtown West Fargo. That precipitated a number of conversations. We brought a kind of a draft scope of work to the planning and zoning commission, you might recall, towards the end of 2022. Ultimately, the city commission did issue, or give staff the green light to issue an RFP, which we did. Throughout the month of January and February, those proposals were reviewed by a selection committee. Our planning and zoning commission chair and vice chair all served on that selection committee. Ultimately, we received, I think, 13 proposals in total, and the selection committee recommended Bolton &amp; Mink to undertake the project throughout the course of 2023 here. And so, just last week, the city commission did approve the project contract with Bolton &amp; Mink for the downtown master plan project. The moving forward, well, the scope of work itself is included as an attachment in your packet, if anybody's interested in any of the details of what's all included as part of the project. It's basically a list of everything that the consultant will be working with the city on over the course of the coming months here, with substantial project completion by fall of this year. The consultant is just in the process of getting kind of all tooled up and ready to go for project kickoff here in early May. They're tentatively looking at, I think, the first Wednesday in May to be in town here for some kickoff activities, and so we anticipate having some more information to send out to you via email here in the coming weeks. And then, over the course of the summer, as various activities and things take place downtown, such as cruise night, or once we get to West Fest, those are opportunities for some public input. One of the highlights, I think, from the Bolton &amp; Mink team itself is they do have some pretty good capabilities in terms of interactive websites, so they will be developing a project website as, in the initial stages of the project, which is going to be very interactive, opportunity for people to, you know, move around on a map and kind of, it's like an interactive GIS kind of system where they can plug and play, or plug in comments and different things, interact with the project that way. There will be a public survey, for example, and a number of other opportunities for public and stakeholders to weigh in here, so that includes the planning and zoning commission, so we're going to be providing you guys updates as we get them. So, really, this is just looking to circle back to you guys and let you know where that project currently sits and stand for any questions you might have.
The scope of work that's here, is this the same as what was submitted for the RFP?
Very similar.
They made some edits to it?
Sorry, what?
They made some edits to it?
Very slight edits. I think instead of like three work sessions, there's two work sessions, and then they were going to focus more, I think, on some of the parking things based on some of the feedback from the selection committee.
Okay.
So, substantially the same, I'd say. The last page of the proposal, Exhibit C there, has a general, generalized project timeline. This will kind of be evolving as the project... This will kind of be evolving as the project moves along, and like I said, within the next three weeks or so, we should have a clarity, a lot better idea of what those different dates and different input, input activities and opportunities will be, so.
Thanks for the update.
Thank you.
So, item nine, non-agenda. Are there any other items we need to discuss, non-agenda? Yes, sir?
One quick item. Regrettably, Chanda Erickson
Uh-huh.
Has taken a position in our finance department, so it's a, it's going to be a great opportunity for her, but she's going to be missed within the planning department. So her new duties start already next week, so Friday, we'll be here last week in the planning department, so she handles a lot of our day-to-day, a lot of our communication, obviously, as you all know, so you'll be seeing some changes in communication and things in the short term here, so.
Not that you can replace her, but are, are you already have somebody backfill, to backfill, or?
Not yet. We're working with HR to get it posted right now, so.
Oh, getting posted.
Getting posted, yep.
Any other items? Item ten, adjournment.
Move per adjourn.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Thanks, everyone.